Okay, welcome, everybody. Um, let me open my agenda. Um, so what a world we're in. Who ever thought that everyone would be elected to council and be our first virtual council? So this is the Greenfield day is April 15th, 2020. It's our 204th regular meeting. And anything's regular about this meeting. Um, the time is 7:05 PM and we are holding our first ever remote meeting via WebEx. Um, this meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the city and by GCTV. If any other persons present are doing the same, please notify me at this time. And to do so, make sure you come off mute.
So it is also being recorded on WebEx.
Right, yep. Seeing none or hearing none unless anyone's. Sheila cannot hear.
Yep, I see that.
I guess let's do a quick pulse check. Can every, can we maybe do, um, open the meeting? Can we have all councilors just say that they're here?
Do you want me to, uh, do the roll call? That way we can keep taking here?
Yeah, just to make sure everyone, I can hear everyone and everyone can hear us.
Okay.
Oh yeah, so roll them. That'll be helpful, please, thank you.
Okay, so I could, uh, okay, the roll call is for attendance. Counselor Jarvis.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Gwynn. Counselor Gwynn.
Maybe he's having trouble hearing as well.
Yep, um, he just messaged that he is here. Um, so he is attending. Counselor Disorder. Thank you. Counselor Bottom.
Here.
Counselor Gwynn, are you here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, yes. Counselor Dolan.
I'm here as well.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore. Counselor Gilmore, can you hear me? Hold on just a minute, folks. I'm gonna see if I can help Counselor Gilmore with her microphone. Counselor Gilmore, can you hear me? I'm gonna come back to Counselor Gilmore in a minute. Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Mayo.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Forgie.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Ricketts.
Here.
Thank you. President Stempel.
Present.
Thank you.
So that might be, um, a, a internet issue. For sure, okay.
Counselor Gilmore, can you hear me? Counselor Gilmore. Can you hear me?
I can see you.
We can see you. She can hear me, Kathy. Sheila, raise your hand if you are acknowledging that you're here. Thank you. I see she's raising her hand. Madam President, you have a full council.
Wonderful, thank you, everybody. Um, so before we go ahead and move into the Pledge of Allegiance, um, I just want to, now that everyone's here, go over and confirm some of the processes in our virtual environment. Um, so Kathy sent out an email earlier today and just in case no one has received it or had the opportunity to read it, because times are crazy. Um, so please use audio only when you're actively speaking, when you want to debate or comment. Um, for the majority of the time, please have yourself, um, on mute so we don't have background noise. Um, that will be very helpful to making sure that we have, um, an orderly agenda. Um, I know it says here to only use video and audio when you're actively speaking, but I think for right now, it's okay to use video. And if we do have, um, a broad or broad, sorry, bandwidth issue, then we might have to go to no video unless you are speaking. And so I'll just kind of call that if it happens. I'll keep monitoring it. We'll all know if it happens because the, the meeting will essentially crash. Um, does everybody understand that? So mute, and when you're not speaking, unmute when you do need to speak. And when you do need to speak, so we're not speaking all over each other. Um, I realize that there is a mechanism on WebEx for raising your hand, but I think the Chromebooks do not, um, the functionality of the Chromebooks do not allow for the raising of the hand. So we're not gonna be able to use that to be acknowledged. So if you'd like to be acknowledged, please use the chat box to request to be acknowledged. And, um, you'll mute yourself, I will acknowledge you, you'll unmute yourself, and then you'll discuss. Does that make sense? Does anyone have any questions?
Sounds good.
Great, thank you very much. Um, and then I just want to be very clear to everybody that we are not to use the chat box for debating or discussing motions. The only reason why any counselor should be using the chat box is if they're having technical issues or if they wish to be acknowledged. Um, if we do use the chat box for that purpose, we'll be violating open meeting law and we certainly don't want to do that. Um, and then lastly, when we vote, uh, because it is hard to see hands, we will be doing roll call votes tonight. And, um, I guess lastly, if there's any public here, um, you will do the same to sign in to public comment. You will use the chat box to please list your name and your address. And I will acknowledge public comment speakers by the order that they have been typed into the chat box. And then, um, after that, we ask the same for public to please not use the chat box to discuss, comment, or react to the meeting. That is the quick rundown. And of course, if anybody has questions as we go through, if you have questions about anything, um, please be acknowledged and you can ask live via the call. All right, um, with that being said, I will move into involuntary pledge of allegiance.
I have a flag here. If anyone would like to look at the flag, I will move.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I can't say I've ever done that in my house, so that's great. Um, lovely, new, new times. Uh, so next we have an approval of minutes for February 19th, 2020. Um, do I hear? Motion. Who is that?
Counselor Ricketts.
Thank you. Do I hear?
Gilmore second.
Right here, move from Counselor Ricketts, second by Counselor Gwynn. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We'll do this. Are there any opposed? Abstentions? All right, well, we'll call that a unanimous positive, Kathy. And then we will, you roll call for our motions moving forward. Next up, we have communications. It looks like from our chairperson of the school committee. Uh, take the floor, please. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. So I didn't know that I was gonna have to give the city council lessons on having a video meeting. We've had three video school committee meetings since the shutdown, so we're the experts, I think. Um, uh, Superintendent Harper took a personal day today. And, um, I'll start with a little bit about what's been happening in the schools and her much-needed personal day, I should say. Um, her, Superintendent Harper has been working easily 16-hour days since the shutdown, trying to manage going through the process of identifying how to engage our students before we were told to put together a remote learning plan. And then once, uh, we were given the charge by the state on, uh, March 26th to put together a remote learning plan for all of our students, she worked, uh, tirelessly 10 days straight to put that plan together. Um, and I want to acknowledge also that, uh, the school committee members Glenn Johnson and Susan Ekstrom spent, uh, seven multiple-hour sessions with the Greenfield Education Association, the union, the teachers' union, uh, putting together a, uh, impact bargaining agreement, a mutual agreement around remote learning for our teachers and our, um, our Unit C staff, our paraprofessional staff. And that process went as smooth as can be, uh, possible. And the, the issue with the, the union and the remote learning plan is twofold. We can't put something in the remote learning plan without the education association, the union agreeing that it would be a part of the teachers' and educators' responsibilities. So they were constantly moving back and forth with what could be in the plan and how, um, how the teachers would, uh, agree to it. And it was a very delicate process, but both sides worked really, really well together. Um, as I said, it took seven sessions over about 10 days to get that done. Um, and you know, I, I would also say we haven't, we haven't heard a whole lot officially from families, uh, from students about moving to remote learning. We've had, you know, definitely some concerned emails from parents, definitely some emails from parents questioning what was happening and, um, why it was taking so long to move to remote learning. And I don't know how you measure how long, this is what I've told people, is how do you measure how long it should take to do something totally unprecedented in a monumental timeline? Like, it, it, we just, you can't put something together that shifts your entire educational structure in 10 days. But that's basically what we were asked to do and, and what we've done. Um, and I think that when we come out of this, not only will we have an amazing, uh, resource in a remote learning plan, but also we will have learned a whole lot about what works for students in a 21st century environment, what works for teachers in a 21st century environment. And I think this will really expand the tools that we have, uh, available as educators. The last piece I just want to mention is that a big part of rolling this plan out was actually getting students the technology that they needed to be successful. And that included a plan to roll out, um, almost 500 Chromebooks and assign them to individual students who needed them. Uh, that happened last Thursday and Friday. I think the exact number is like 485 Chromebooks that already belong to the schools that have been rolled out to students. Um, and that was a huge effort that took staff from every single school to make that happen, including distributing them on last Thursday in the pouring rain to families who pulled up in their cars with paper signs, uh, with the student's name in the window, you know, to do social distancing properly. Um, and so it was a huge effort. And along with that technology effort, uh, we worked very closely with GSET to, uh, offer, there are students and families in the district that don't have internet at home. We worked with GSET, uh, to offer a special package to families that qualify, uh, that they can get internet for, for no cost within the GSET area for the rest of the school year, and then I believe $10 a month after that. Um, the city collaboration has just been awesome. Um, I know I've talked to the mayor pretty regularly. I know that the superintendent has been, um, involved in a lot of conversations at the city level. Um, and we're very grateful for the collaboration that's come out of this. I think Greenfield has seen what, uh, planning and, um, collaboration can do to make things easier in a really impossible situation. Um, and I'm, I'll leave it at that and I'm happy to take any questions. No questions? Although it looks like President Stempel is frozen.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Um, congratulations. I've listened to both of your last two meetings.
Oh, thank you.
I have found the effort that you made to get that done, um, extraordinarily commendable. And I, I did just have a little, um, question about the GSET role in it. Your role has been just like above board and wonderful. I just wondered, I read a little bit of something about what GSET did, but could you go over that one more time? And again, thank you.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate especially that people are listening, um, to the meetings, uh, on, uh, on GCTV. Um, so with GSET, they are offering a package that, uh, provides internet access to eligible families through the end of the school year at no cost. And the eligible means they have to be in the service area that GSET already has. Um, and they have to have a qualifying, uh, reason like being on SNAP benefits or some other, uh, benefit program, uh, that indicates that they're low income. And then they can get into that program, uh, free of charge for the rest of the school year. You're welcome. Any other questions? Oh, it looks like Counselor Gilmore has a question.
Yes, I was wondering, um, at this point, do we have any plans for the kids to return to school during the 1920 school year? Or are we looking at maybe fall for the 2021 school year? Or do we even know yet?
That, that's a great question. The easy answer is, we don't know yet. Uh, the more detailed answer is, we are really proceeding at every step with caution. I should have said before, I'm, I'm really proud of the fact that Greenfield did not, many other school districts ran right out of the gate and put remote learning in place the week that schools closed and have had to do a whole one step forward, two steps back rollout based on guidance from the state, changing or not having guidance at all when the schools first closed. We waited to implement remote learning until Thursday, March 26th is when we began to put the plan in place, because that is when the guidance from the state came to do remote learning through May 4th. May 4th is currently the date at which we're scheduled to reopen the schools. Um, I anticipate that that will be evaluated very closely within the next few weeks. And I do know from being on, uh, one of Joe Commerford's conference calls last week that at the state level, they're already talking about whether or not that May 4th date could be reasonable date. We don't have any further guidance than that at this time.
Because can people hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I had a, a internet or something issue. Um, so I missed.
You looked good where you froze up, so it's okay.
I'm perfect. Um, it's all for television. Um, so I, I wasn't sure what I missed or not. And so where I left off is you were speaking about the partnership between GSET and the schools, and I, I really do want to applaud this effort, but I think it also shines a light on the disparity that we still have, um, which is no, I, I honestly don't think it's a, it's a fault of GSET. I don't think it's a fault of the schools, obviously, that GSET still doesn't have access to some of our lower-income areas in town, meaning the Greenfield Gardens or Light and Woods, where students really do need access to the internet and may not have it and don't have access to this wonderful, wonderful, amazing collaborative program. And so I'm urging councilors to really think about that, how the, the citizens in Greenfield who need, uh, low-cost internet the most via GSET don't have access to it, because we've kind of been nickel-and-diming GSET over the years. Um, we really need to think about how we're gonna move GSET forward, um, and fund it so all of our residents can, can have access to this tool, especially now when our students need it the most. Um, and so I just wanted to applaud that, Amy. And I also want to say like, thank you to you and everybody else for the work that you've done. And it's easier to like, sit back and be like, why isn't this happening so quickly? Um, but the work that's been put in is amazing. You've done such a great job.
Thank you. Uh, and you know, I, I'm, I'm very, very proud of the way everyone has worked together, particularly the, the school committee. Um, we've really come together and contributed in a way, each individual member has given, um, really excellent, uh, opinions and problem solving, and it's helped us to move forward. It's, uh, it's a, it, it really is an impossible situation that we're in, in terms of schooling. There's no easy answer. There's no ideal remote learning plan. Um, so we're just trying to do our best with what we know about our community and the resources that we have.
Great, and I'd like to acknowledge Counselor Ricketts to speak.
Okay, um, let me see if I can do this. Can you, everyone hear me? Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to let you know that I've been following the school committee meetings and they have been great. I love how, just how excited everybody is to work together, to be on the same page. And when I just watched the other night, they were just like, can we meet again tomorrow? Can we meet in two days? And they really want to get up and running and work together fast. So it's been great watching your meetings. You're doing a great job. And I just wanted to say I'm proud of the school committee, the, all the time and effort they're putting into this. And it doesn't matter how many times in one week, they are up and willing to run. So that's good.
Thank you. Thank you, Penny.
Would anyone else, um, like to speak or have a question for, uh, Chairperson Parity? Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you very much. Good luck to you guys. All right. Yeah, I, I actually have. I know if you can hear Joe in the background, but Joe is saying, I'm hungry, I'm hungry.
Hi, Joe.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and next we have communications from Mayor Weedgarner and any other city officers and employees.
Well, okay. I'm trying to unmute.
I can hear you, yep.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
And now, now.
Am I unmuted?
You are now.
Okay, great. Here I go then. Uh, good evening, councilors. Uh, thank you Chair Parity for that, uh, great report. I do, uh, first and foremost, before we get started on this, uh, with what the city has to say here, um, commend the school committee for really and truly all the hard work they've done. Uh, I could see it daily. And, um, and yes, we've had many communications and they've been, um, they've been going quite well. So I'm, I'm delighted that, uh, the remote learning program is up and running and I applaud any kind of planning before one acts. Um, because I think at the end of the day, you'll, you'll always be better for it. Uh, which brings me to, uh, the state of the city of Greenfield at this moment in time. I thought tonight we would talk about two things. Um, I'll try to keep them both brief. Um, first is a COVID-19 pandemic response. Um, and I have Chief Strahan and Chief Ray here with me this evening or somewhere in this, um, interweb is, um, is the two of them. And, um, I can turn it over to them shortly. But just to say, we began our planning, uh, for our response, if I'm not mistaken, on March 6th with a meeting of many department heads. And, uh, it was led primarily by Chief Strahan. And we all took his lead, uh, first for the most part. And it's paid out in many dividends. I, I could not have possibly done this without, uh, both of our chiefs' leadership. So, uh, let me just say that upfront, as well as the constant attention to the importance of communication from, uh, Chief of Staff Danielle Letourneau. So, um, I will thank both of, all three of them here this evening. And of course, the whole, uh, emergency command staff. We have a great staff over there, from our healthcare people to our emergency management people, to people handling, uh, the, the remote line, or I'm sorry, the, um, resource line. And, um, and Chrissy Moore, who's been fielding a lot of different jobs, uh, here and there right now, she's, uh, assisting with the, um, resource line. And, um, MJ Adams, uh, as well. And MJ's done a, a wonderful job, uh, both helping ServiceNet get their, um, homeless shelter consolidated so that they have roomed out, uh, on Well Street or, um, for the healthy homeless. And they have the ability to also, uh, isolate people if they need to. So far, that's not been necessary and we are, um, we're grateful for that, for sure. So thanks to them. Uh, MJ is now, uh, working on and has collaborated with, um, the CDC on a micro-business loan program for those people that really are even less than two months away from not being able to have their business, um, up and, you know, continue running. So there's, all of the things have not been worked out on that, but it's very close. And they'll, we'll have a, um, a, a loan program up for that. Uh, I'm really happy, uh, that they were able to work so quickly on that, really just the end of last week through, um, through today. And as far as where we're at, I don't know how many of you read the numbers this morning. I don't know that there's a lot to read into them, but, um, and perhaps both of the chiefs can give you a even, uh, as of this afternoon update. So, uh, we currently have, uh, 66 positive cases. We have 45 resolved and we have 22 deaths. And what's, what's important about these numbers for Greenfield is that the 22 deaths, as bad as that is, uh, is holding, holding steady. And, uh, the 45 improving is up from the day before. So, uh, we're feeling, um, cautiously hopeful that, uh, we're somewhere, somewhere on the road to improvement, I guess is the way I would put it, because that's really just a snapshot in time. So, uh, with that, I will turn it over to, um, uh, Bob Strahan and, uh, Robbie Hay, uh, to make any additional comments on COVID-19. uh, to make any additional comments on COVID-19. And when they're done, I will ask, um, Liz, because as you all well know, the next big thing that we're doing simultaneously with this is the budget. And I don't know how many of you were able to be at the Ways and Means meeting for the Executive Office, um, the other evening, but Liz put together a budget overview that I think is important for all councilors to see as you move into this period of time. And she's shortened it up so it won't be too long. So, uh, chiefs, are you ready?
Sure, Mayor. Uh, uh, thank you, um, and to everyone, uh, hello. Uh, I want to thank everybody for the support to the EOC, uh, as we have gone through this effort. Uh, I, I'll just state that the, the work that the staff is doing out of the EOC is pretty remarkable. Um, our, we are so fortunate to have the expertise in our health, uh, section within the Command, uh, Center. Um, with the work that they've been doing, uh, it's pretty remarkable, the amount of work that they've done from day one. We would be aware of a hotspot that would come up and our health folks would be right on it and confining it. And I really credit them for, uh, keeping the numbers, uh, in check, uh, where they are. Obviously, we, we all are concerned, uh, with the numbers that we have, but our numbers are pretty reflective of, of the rest of the country and where we are with the COVID virus. Uh, but they've done a remarkable job keeping it, uh, in check, uh, in, in the places, uh, when we've been able to find out early. Um, our health people are in contact with all our, uh, facilities, our nursing homes and the hospital twice a day. Uh, they're constantly in contact with them. Uh, we are in contact with the hospital on their planning efforts. Um, should, uh, should, you know, surge issues become a, a problem, um, we're, we're working on, you know, the, the what-if plans. Uh, there's a lot of planning that goes on with that and everybody's been doing a great job with that. The one thing that I do want to highlight is, is the team effort from this, uh, from the city, uh, has been huge. And we are running with a skeleton crew at the operations center, uh, and that is really done by design, just to try to keep the risk down, uh, for, uh, for people working there. Uh, we know that we're at risk working together, but we put the risk aside and, uh, uh, really do a great job with the, with the small crew that we have. So that's what I have. And Chief Hague has something.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add. It's, it's been, um, an experience and, uh, we're a long way from the end, but I, I do, uh, want to thank everybody that is there and the support that we're getting from the top for when we need something and we're able to go to, uh, go to the mayor's office and, uh, get that support for what, uh, we need to provide, uh, at least in the short term, um, in hopes that we have a, a very long-term success. So I echo what Bob said and, uh, again, I also would urge any councilors who wish to come down and see what we have going on there. We're a much smaller group now than we were when we started, but, uh, that's a good sign. It's not working, but I hope to see everybody down there at some point.
Hey.
Yeah, if I, if I could add one more, one more item, we really would like to, uh, extend our appreciation to the citizens of the city of Greenfield. Uh, they've taken, uh, uh, the mandates that have come down from the federal government and from state government. And, uh, people seem to be adhering to it. And I think that that's, uh, part of our success with, uh, with really trying to flatten the curve, if you will. Everything that, uh, we've been in contact with the hospital has suggested that that is exactly, uh, what has happened. So, uh, we want to just put the message out, uh, thank you for our citizens within the city and, uh, uh, we know it's hard, but keep up the work that they're doing as well.
Thank you. Um, we have a question from Councilor Bricketts. Or a comment.
Hi, thank you. I don't so much have a question as I do a comment. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for inviting councilors to come. And I don't know if all the councilors have been there or not, but I was beyond impressed. I didn't know what to expect when I went there. I expected both chiefs to be there and I could ask a couple of questions, but it was so much bigger than that. I mean, it's a real well-run operation. I think it's impressive. I can see why, you know, you don't have Channel 22 and all the media in there taking pictures because you do a very good job of making sure the virus isn't coming in and out of there. But for the council, I hope that every single one of you go because I think it's important. I learned so much today and they are right on top of it. Um, I know that other towns must be looking to us for guidance and how they could too do this, but so impressed. And I just want, oh, public safety, just keep being safe and thank you for everything.
Um, next there's a, either a question or a comment from Councilor Gilmore.
Um, actually, I have both, if you don't mind. Um, so I also appreciate the invitation to tour the, uh, the EOC. I unfortunately, uh, decided it was not very, uh, it was not wise for me to go because I have several people in my house who are still considered essential employees. They have to report to work every day. Um, so my house is not exactly a fortress, although we're trying our best to quarantine. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to go and, and, you know, risk any of our first responders catching anything if I'm an asymptomatic carrier. Um, but that being said, um, I do want to know, for those of you who are working on the front lines, I keep hearing that there's supposed to be a surge soon. And I thought it was supposed to be this week, but I also heard it was going to be last week. And I feel like my, my information is so limited because I am stuck in the house and I only get the news articles and unfortunately, you know, the things that people share on Facebook. And I'm just wondering if you have a better sense of how things are going? Are we, um, are, are we really approaching that surge? Is, is it behind us now? Um, I just kind of want to get a sense of where we are as a community, if you can even give me that information.
Um, I, I can try to address a little bit for you and then I'm sure Bob can do better than me. Um, I, I think overall, we're looking at it saying we expect it to be, uh, worse than we are. Um, I, I think when you start looking at the numbers, and we, and we've talked about this every day, um, and, and we keep hearing the surge is coming, the surge is coming, and we can't say it's not. But what we can tell you is, is that just by the way we look at our numbers, when you see a gradual increase, that can be expected. Uh, what we don't want to see is a monster increase. And, and I think what we're seeing right now is if people are doing what, what they can do to the best of their ability, that curve is more of a gradual increase, which allows for the hospitals and the doctors to, to handle those cases that are coming in on a basis that they can handle. Uh, not saying that they're not seeing a lot, but what we don't want to do is overwhelm them. So I think when we talk about it every day, that's what we tend to look at. And that's why we're really proud of our, our healthcare side, who has been very diligent on getting out there and reaching out to people, especially those who have either come into contact or been around or on that high risk in, in getting them the information quickly to maybe avoid, uh, a potential additional spread. So I think we're, in our minds at least, we're, we're less than a pace than we expected, but we, we definitely know we're not out of the woods yet at all. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Chief. I know he probably has more detail for you.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Chief. Um, so the indication, like I said, was talking with the hospital is, is their data that they're showing for the Bay State Health Systems, uh, across the board, is, is showing off the level off, uh, if you will, of new, new patients. We see an anomaly, uh, uh, every once in a while, like two days ago, there were 10 new cases within the community, but a lot of that's reporting. Um, and we have far more testing that is available now. You know, two weeks ago, there was very little testing, only the very, very sick people were, were, were being tested. Uh, and now that, that testing is, is more far-reaching. And so we, we expect the numbers to go up, but I think that that is going to be, um, not indicative of where the disease is right now within the community. Um, and, uh, what's important to us that we're seeing is the hospital rates, uh, are staying consistent and, uh, uh, and, and staying down. Um, and for three days, um, uh, you know, the deaths in the, in, in the community have been steady for three days. And that's something that we hadn't seen, uh, uh, for a while. Now, that's not to say that that won't continue and the rates won't go up, but we are seeing indication that it is leveling off. Um, and, uh, as long as people keep being diligent with what they're doing, uh, we're hoping that that, that trend will, will continue. And again, you know, I said it earlier and the chief said it, this, this is really in credit to, to our health folks that, um, uh, it's unbelievable, the amount of work that, that, that they do. The whole operations center to support the city is mainly there to support them and the effort that they, they have. Uh, and, and they work, uh, is, I think it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, they're really doing a remarkable job.
And we're also seeing the numbers go up for people that are recovering and that, and that's, that's a really important thing to keep in mind.
Chief Hague, uh, Chief Hague said that well. Uh, our recovery rate, we're actually tracking, uh, you know, how many cases have been from year to date, but we also track the amount of people that have fully recovered. Uh, and that number, it keeps going up and up and up. And that is, uh, that is really encouraging to see.
Great, thank you. Um, Mayor, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Um, I think they covered it pretty well. I will, um, again, just say thank you to everyone, uh, in the city of, echo what Bob said, everyone in the city of Greenfield who, for the most part, is following the guidelines that were set down, um, by our office and by the governor's office with regard to, um, physical distancing and, and staying at home. Um, as far as media coverage goes, somebody mentioned that. I will say that Channel 5 from Boston came out yesterday and had a fairly lengthy interview with me. Um, and they were all over the city. It wasn't just me. They went to, um, they went to the Salvation Army during feeding, uh, during the lunch time. And I feel like they were at a couple of other different places as well. So it was, if, if they ever end up showing it, it'll, and they, you know, cover it well, it will be a nice piece on Greenfield, um, in the Boston area. I'm told that it'll be on tomorrow's news in the evening, either 5 or 6. But, um, I don't, I don't know that for, for sure yet. So at some point, we'll go online and it'll probably be up there as well. Um, I, if you, it will indulge us a little bit longer. I'll ask Liz to switch gears here and, um, and share a brief, uh, budget overview with, uh, with councilors.
Before Councilor Gilman begins, I'm going to acknowledge Councilor Disorder to speak.
Oh, sure. I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
No worries. This is all virtual weirdness.
Yeah. I see Phil has one too.
Jenny, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I just also wanted to say thank you. I took the tour also. Um, and I'd like to say a special thank you to all that you have done to be protecting us. And, um, I had just a question about the reporting as far as our long-term care facilities. If you, either of the chiefs had any input on that, that seems to be nationally, a, um, something that is not taken into, it's not counted, uh, in proportion to how it should be. Do you have any input on that? But mostly thank you.
Um, as, as far as numbers, what Greenfield is reporting is what we've been consistent with is, is our verified numbers, uh, citywide. Um, that, that's, that's how we're reporting it. Um, we don't report per location, address that as such, but we do report as the whole verified numbers. And, uh, like Chief Strahan said, you know, there, there is, sorry, uh, there is a, uh, a lag, uh, at times with, with the reporting of the verified numbers. So, uh, unfortunately, sometimes you'll, you'll see those numbers and, and kind of question them, but, but unfortunately, we want to make sure we're reporting accurate numbers. Uh, we're not hiding anything, uh, as far as numbers. We're reporting the true verified numbers that we get. Yes, um, we have urged, uh, those who wish to report their numbers from their, their own, uh, locations, they certainly can, but we as a city, uh, have stuck by this. We, we are reporting verified numbers as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then I'd also like to acknowledge Councilor Elmer.
Hi, thank you, President Stempel. Uh, I, I have two questions for the chiefs. Uh, how's your supply of PPE? Do you have enough? And, uh, has, have the residents of the nursing homes, have you, have, have you been able to test everybody there, the residents and the staff? Do you have enough testing for that? Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you still there?
Yeah, I can answer that question. Uh, so we as the public safety officials, uh, within the community have received our shipments of, uh, of PPE. And so we're okay for a few weeks. Uh, we've received a, a big shipment from MEMA on hand sanitizer. And so we're in the process of getting that out to, to other agencies. We've taken some delivery of PPE that we've been able to turn around and, and send out small quantities, but really, uh, when, when vital, especially early on, when vital, uh, facilities were short, uh, we were able to give them some PPE to get them through to when their shipments were there. PPE is flowing a little bit more, uh, but we still have some, we still have some, some significant needs. Uh, but, uh, our, our folks are, are well-protected and, uh, and, um, if it changes, we will update you.
I think the second part of your question was about the testing and, and we're not doing that. We don't do the testing. That's not part of what we do.
Um, could I follow up?
Sure.
Uh, but do you, do you know what the situation is in the nursing homes? Do they have enough testing equipment?
Uh, Chief, do you want to address that? Uh, I mean, we don't really, unfortunately, we don't get involved with the actual testing of it. Um, I can only kind of tell you what our process is for our people. Um, you know, there's a, certainly a process for first responders, um, whether it's the Biggie or going to, uh, Gillette Stadium, or whether it's going to private doctors, that's our testing procedure. We aren't involved with how many tests or who's tested with, with private agencies.
Thank you.
Um, Councilor Elmer.
Do you want to add on to that, Chief, or not?
Uh, I, I think you covered it, Chief. Um, you know, the one thing that, that, that we have learned with testing, uh, first responders is, is the, the accuracy of the test, uh, until you're actually exhibiting symptoms has, has not been the greatest. Um, and so, uh, uh, we're adjusting our, 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 our first responder testing. As far as everybody else in the community, um, the, the, the procedure's been from day one, the same. And that is, is if you have symptoms, you call your healthcare provider. Your healthcare provider can give you the direction on where, where folks can get tested. That's the method that is, is still holding true to, uh...
I can answer, uh, a part of your question regarding, um, nursing homes. Um, really, the only one that I, I think any of us have any, uh, insight into is Buckley and their parent company has contracted with a lab. Uh, so whenever those folks in Buckley need to be tested, um, they are tested and the lab, and the results can be turned around in a day, which is certainly different from a lot of other labs and testing facilities. Uh, they're the only ones that have really reported out to us any, any kind of specifics around testing and what... and what their capacity is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Take, I guess, pause to see if councilors have any questions regarding this piece. And then we'll kick it off to Director Gilman. Seeing none, welcome to our virtual meeting, Director Gilman.
Hi, all. On the first Ways and Means budget meeting, I did do a presentation. You all should have received it by email, the presentation and all the attachments. It was recorded. It is on GCTV, if you would like to view it. But one of the things, I'm just going to go through a few key slides, not all of it, because it was a lot. But one of the things I wanted counsel to get out of this presentation is that how this is one whole budget and that the magnitude of the fixed cost in relationship to the entire budget. So I did a couple graphs on that, I'll show you that. And then I'll talk a little bit about what I heard this morning on a conference call with mayors, mayors and the state on revenue for the state for the current year and '21. So, all right. Why am I not able to share content? Am I connected? Can people hear me?
You are connected. So I'm seeing a little thing in the corner saying that we're having a bandwidth issue. But I see something loading right now, Liz.
I got it, I got it, I see it. Well, it's just taken a while, huh?
Yeah, the bandwidth situation is real.
Do you want us to shut off our video?
Yeah, that would help a lot if councilors would shut off their video.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go, wow. Okay, so I'm just, like I said, I'm going to skip some screens because I'm just going to go through some of the more important ones, I feel. I actually am going to skip through this. Okay, the budget that the mayor presented is over $53 million, $53,879. The tax rate would be $23.55, which is a 2.69% increase, or 62 cents. And our excess levy capacity at this point would be $1.5 million. So one of the, some of the major, I'm going to skip over this, again, there's a lot of attachments. The major increases on expenses for the budget was the health insurance. We had a 7.5% increase and 13 new retirees. 276,000 of it was from free cash used to support the FY '20 budget, which we don't want to do. The increase in the school committee appropriation, increase in retirement assessment, and increase in contractual salaries. I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to go to some graphs. Okay, so this is where I'm talking about the fixed cost of this budget. And I took the $53,879 budget. And I did a pie graph. And you can see that the fixed costs, which I have more detail on the next graph, is 30% of this budget. And this is a significant amount. And it's really what we need to try and focus on to achieve some savings, efficiencies. Here is another way to break it out. So the center section are the fixed costs. It's the pension, the health insurance, both active and retirees, unemployment, Medicare, life insurance, workers' comp, our property and liability insurance, the debt. And so it does represent a lot, 30% of the budget. And it interrelates to all the departments. I think that there's a lot of information here. And I really am going to skip through it because I know you've received the attachments. And whether you want to ask questions now or even contact me after, we can. But we talked a bit about how we're going to handle what we don't know is coming. So for, for short term, we talked about identifying potential cuts in the budget. We're working on identifying what we feel is a potential revenue loss. For FY '20, unless we have some 9C cuts. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's where the state will say, we can't give you your, all of your cherry sheet money this year. And at the end of the year, that's kind of a hard thing to swallow. But I did not hear that at the mayor's meeting this morning. So it's not likely to happen. And on our local receipts, we're actually doing pretty well. The only concerns I have is on the Medicaid billing. And I'm going to reach out to the school because, oh, 2/3 of the Medicaid billing comes in June. And so how reduced will that be or not? But believe it or not, they have done some teledoc on those services. So there still could be a substantial piece coming in, but I don't think it'll be the whole thing. The other area I'm concerned about is our parking meter revenue. We're, at this point, we're about $70,000 short. And this is mid-April. Obviously, we'll get some in, but not a lot. So I may have to submit something for an adjustment on that. But in the scheme of things with what we're dealing with, it's not a horrific position to be in. What is going to be more difficult is on the '21 budget. Because there is without a doubt going to be a cut to the governor's budget. And I've heard anywhere from the Mass Taxpayers Foundation saying 14% to 10%. But the state would not give any parameters on this meeting. So it's kind of difficult. But I have always found the Mass Taxpayers Foundation to be very reliable. The other thing I can tell you is the cuts will likely be to the UGA accounts, the unrestricted general government accounts. They likely will not touch Chapter 70. There's also talk, I don't know if any of you remember the ERA and stimulus grants back when the economy was really bad in 2008. There's talk that something like that may come along. And that was used to help support Chapter 70 during that timeframe. So I don't think there'll be a Chapter 70 cut, but a 10% cut to our unrestricted general government is $346,000. So the other question I have is why we're doing okay on certain local receipts in FY '20? That's because 3/4 of the year, we did well. The question is, how long will this situation last? And who knows? Will hotels and meals rebound? And, or is it going to take a while? The only blessing I can tell you is that if you have to use one time for revenue sources, and that's sort of why we have a stabilization count or free cash, is that you're using it because you anticipate that the levels of that revenue will come right back up. And so I think that's also something we need to look at. But I do know that we're going to start looking at some of those fixed costs. And in terms, specifically, health insurance, we're going to start getting together and getting a strategy going. And then present our thoughts to the Insurance Advisory Commission. But really going forward, we need to work on our fixed costs. It would always be lovely to get a new revenue stream, but that just, it just isn't realistic. So we are facing some challenging times. But we are in a pretty good position with our stabilization account. And again, I will say this is why we have it. And I feel that we're in better shape than a lot of the smaller communities. So I think that the key to all this is for us to have a plan for which, where we would make cuts if we had to. And, you know, you have a meeting in July to reduce the budget, reduce, raise and appropriate, which you can do before the tax rate gets set. But we need to know how the year's going to finish out and what the governor's numbers are going to be. You know, you can't just start slashing without even knowing the extent to which you need to slash. So, but we're up to the challenge. I think that we can work well together and figure out a good plan, a good strategy going forward. And I don't know if anyone has had a chance to read through the material. If you haven't, please do. You can also watch it again on GCTV. But this, this is not, this is an unusual budget, as everything is unusual right now. So I will take any questions from folks who have had a chance to look over the information.
I'm going to acknowledge Councilor Gilmore. She's been maybe burning with a question for a little while. So go ahead, Councilor.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
No, I was not, I wasn't burning with a question. I just knew before the meeting started that I wanted to ask about this.
Okay. She's been burning with a question.
So I know that the budget process started long before any of us ever heard of coronavirus. And I know the budget is for next year, we're talking about FY '21. I think that what, what a lot of people seem to be concerned about right now, the people that I've heard from anyways, is, you know, there are a lot of people who are out of work right now, who don't know when they're going back to work. They don't know if they're going back to work. A lot of our small businesses are struggling. Some of them aren't sure if they're going to be able to reopen after this is over. And I'm thinking in the long term, I'm really concerned about what we can do to sort of help those folks out in the meantime. I know that, you know, we can levy taxes and we can say that this is how much it costs for us to run things. But you, at the end of the day, you can't get blood out of stone. And I'm not, you know, I'm not like a fiscal conservative. I don't think anybody thinks of me that way. But I do recognize the reality that we're, you know, a working class town. We rely on, you know, a very small tax base. And I'm very, very concerned about how people are going to be able to make ends meet and, you know, come up with the funds that we need for all of these expenses. And now we're talking about, you know, getting less from Governor Baker, which I completely understand why he would have to give us less. I know that there are more pressing issues right now. And I just wonder, do we have, is this something that we're going to be feeling the effects of for several years? Is there a way to sort of spread these costs out to make it easier on our residents? I know that we have to meet all these obligations. I know that we need our public safety, our DPW workers, our schools, and all these things cost a lot of money. I recognize their value. But is there, is there any wiggle room for folks who are challenged right now?
Well, I can tell you that the treasurer collector does work with folks one-on-one in individual situations. But we are so reliant on our property tax revenue. And I'm hoping that there actually isn't some of the, what I'm calling ERA or stimulus that is going to come out, something along the lines for revenue. What we have coming out right now is like, we'll help you with COVID expenses and not a lot of recognizing the fact that we're losing revenue. And that did come up at the meeting this morning. So hopefully, something like that will come through. I, you know, it's hard because it's hard, wish you had a crystal ball, you know? How long will it take to come out of this? How quickly can some of these businesses recover? How quickly can some folks get back to work? We just don't know the magnitude or the answers. That's the uncertainty of this whole thing. That's what gets to me all the way around, is the uncertainty of everything.
Thank you. I, Councilor Mayo, can you please refrain from commenting via the chat box? If you do want to speak, I'm happy to acknowledge you. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Director Gilman. Are you, were you finished? And may I please?
I was going to say, I just wanted to know if anyone had more questions.
Yeah, I'm going to acknowledge Councilor Disorder now, because she has a question for you.
Hi, thank you very much. I am, I'm on Ways and Means this year for the first time. And although right now you're saying that the local receipts looked okay, I am concerned about the future of that hotel, restaurant, people's ability to pay their taxes. And I was thinking that probably might be down 10%. Someone else thought maybe it might be down 20% for either the end of this fiscal quarter or the first quarter of next year. And my question to you really was, although I'm in favor, definitely in favor of all of those things. Have you been thinking as we're, I've spent hours looking at this budget and numbers and numbers and numbers. Are you thinking that we should be proceeding as, oh, no, I have a twofold question. One, are you thinking that we should be proceeding as normally? We had anticipated with what we planned to bond for with the bigger expenditures as far as what we were going to build. Do you think that that's actually going to happen in fiscal 2021? And my, the second part of my question is, right now, within our town, have we, and I hate to ask this, but have we done any layoffs to any departments due to COVID-19? Because that would impact, you know, what we're not spending this year is part of next year's budget, is part of fiscal 2021's budget, over and out?
Okay, I'll just do quickly on layoffs. Yes, there is layoffs and reduction in hours for some positions. And yet there are some other critical positions that are vacant. So, you know, you could, you could look at that. But as far as the local receipts for this year, I actually went through and reviewed them all. Hotel and meals generally, so you get paid quarterly, so we've already received 3/4s. And generally, it's heavier in the first half of the year than the second half of the year. I don't anticipate meals being horrifically off. I mean, in terms of what was budgeted and where we're at. And I always say on the local receipts, you have to look at bottom line. For example, motor vehicles for sure going to hit budget, might go a little over. Cannabis, I was only allowed to because it was new, budget 7,500, and we're already at 52,000. So there's things that offset, some are low, some are under, some are over. The two I mentioned were my two biggest concerns. The two I mentioned were my two biggest concerns, which was the parking meter and the Medicaid, which I'm trying to clarify. And yes, in '21, who knows how long it'll take for those to recover? And will some businesses just not come back? And that could be the case. So the strategy really is twofold. You either make all the cuts now and say, we'll add this back if the local receipts are coming back. Or you go with what you have and say in July, when we know that some of the numbers, we'll make reductions then. It's kind of your choices. And as far as the debt goes, I believe a lot of the projects, they're just going to take longer. I don't know how, and we're, like in terms of library, they're just going to have to give extensions. There's just no way that things can go forward. So again, and debt is part of that center area that I talked about, you know, of fixed costs and controlling. But I actually do think we do a good job on that because we only authorize so much in capital projects each year based upon the schedules. So, you know, it's just such a difficult year. A lot of our departments aren't staffed enough. And, you know, if the magnitude of what we're dealing with comes out in July or August that it's astronomical, yeah, we're going to have to have a better plan in place. And we will have a plan in place. But we don't know that. It's the worst not knowing. So you could hold off on maybe a few of the capital items, but some of them are urgent. You know, you have the library and the fire station. Those are the major ones.
Right, and those were the two that I, both in favor, you know, personally speaking, that I, I know that I'm so excited that we're going to be doing. And my question was actually to you, was did you think that was really going to be happening in fiscal 2021? And yet, and, but I know that the interest rates are going to be extremely low, which is a great time to be borrowing money. And can, can we make a plan? Can we make a plan where we say, okay, we'd like to take that $10 million, but because we're planning on doing that, and as part of the budget, can we say, we'd like to take that $10 million, but then, can you have like a secondary plan where you say, well, we're not actually going to be able to do that? Can you make a two-part plan in your budget? Yes, over and out.
Well, I want to make sure I'm understanding your question. The $10 million for the fire station can only be used for the fire. You're not asking that?
No, what I'm asking is if, no, we need that. That's a no-brainer. We absolutely know we need it. And we, and I, but is it going to be a reality that will, it would be starting in 2021? And if it's not, what, what happens? Do you just borrow the money and hold on to that?
So the only thing, when we start a project, you know, it takes generally a few years. And if you look at the, in the budget book, there's a stack debt. We won't bond for that for quite a few years. So what you're talking about is the interest, the temporary interest as you're building the project. Because you take out BAMS on those capital projects. So what you're talking about is what's spent and what you had to borrow to cash flow-wise to cover that. With the library, we're actually making out okay because we're getting money ahead of time. And so that's quite unusual. But with the fire station, you know, I can have, and I can get that number for you exactly what they have budgeted for temporary interest. And, you know, we asked the departments on the capital what they think they'll be spending in the next year, you know? And so that we can figure out some temporary interest. But I think you would be surprised that it isn't as much as you think.
Okay.
But yes, if we found out we weren't going to do that, then that is possibly something you could reduce in the budget on the temporary interest line.
Director, I'd like, I'd like to ask you a question, please.
One second, please. I just want to make sure.
I answered the question.
Yes, thank you, Liz. I just want, I just want to make sure, this is Ashley. I just want to make sure that Christine, did you have a question or were you just having a technical issue?
I just had a technical issue, but it's better now, thank you.
And Counselor Mayo, to be acknowledged, please type into the chat box. And go ahead.
I, I believe I already did.
Right, but I'm, I'm asking for folks, instead of commenting in the chat box, to just say, I'd like to speak. Just trying to keep us in the safe zone for open meeting law.
I can tell you now, I am a one-handed typer. I am disabled. I have very much difficulty seeing the typewriter. So it's, what you, what you see is what you're going to get.
Right. Counselor Mayo, I just need you to try your best to just say, I have a question in the chat box, and I'm happy to acknowledge you. Thank you.
Thanks.
And please, at this point, feel free to go ahead and ask your question. Counselor Mayo?
Standby.
Would you like to ask your question?
Yes, I am typing it, and I'm typing it now.
You're all set for the future. Please go right ahead and ask your question.
Okay. My question is, we've, Director of Finances has already acknowledged that there has been layoffs, but that she did not identify where those layoffs were and how many of them there were.
I mean, Director Gilman? Was that for Director Gilman, Counselor?
Yes. Mayor, would you like me to answer that? Mayor Reed, a governor?
Well, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear who you were addressing, Liz.
No, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm happy to have you answer it. I was, wanted to, Counselor Mayo, to be clear, that there have been no layoffs as a result of COVID-19 at this stage in the game.
Oh, no, they're talking about the budget.
That's not the way his question read, yeah.
I'm not talking about COVID-19.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
So there, there's, now, it's not already happened, but in the next fiscal year, which is July 1, that there was one position from the Treasurer's Office and a reduction in hours in the accounting office. And as well as one less person in central services purchasing as a member retired, an employee retired. So those were the areas where it was reduced.
Okay, thank you.
Great, any other questions for Director Gilman? None, thank you very much. Is there anything else from either the mayor's office or other city employees?
This is right, seeing. Not really. I thank you all for your patience. I did want to address Jenny's concerns as far as building goes. Partly, we, our capital projects, particularly the library and the fire station, I think Liz answered it pretty well. But they're, you know, we build for the future, and that's how we plan our debt as well. The fire station is well underway, and it is dependent upon the, I'm sorry, the library is well on its way. And as you know, it's dependent on their, moving the fire station. Those plans are also underway. And I was going to report on those, but I thought the rest of the evening, the earlier part would take a little longer, so I opted not to. But the Building Committee for the library, for the fire station has been put in place, and we are accepting, as of today was the deadline for the designer. And once we have the designer on board, then that person will be able to assist us in not only coming up with the design and costs, more accurate costs for the, for the fire, the fire and police station, but also with moving it and finding a, getting a temporary location and understanding that. So just wanted to make sure that people understand that much of that, much work has already gone into both of those projects. And they both should go forward as planned from the standpoint that they are quite dependent on one another.
Thank you, Mayor. Who is, who is City Council? Is that, was that you, Mayor, in the chat box?
That was me, Ashley Cathy.
Yep.
I just wanted to acknowledge before you moved on to public comment that there are a few members of the public joining us. And I checked while I was listening to the conversation here. We are going live on GPTV.
Wonderful. Wow, perfect. And so I just want to make sure that the mayor and city employees, I want to make sure that they have wrapped up their portions before we move on.
I think we have.
Thank you so much. And I just want to pause and thank the mayor, Director Letourneau, both chiefs and everybody, right? So everybody that's been a part of this effort. Who knew what we could do, working together in such a short amount of time? A testament, and like the councilors all being able to go virtually. This is crazy, but proud to call Greenfield my city because you all have stepped up to the challenge, and this is our new normal. So thank you so much, Mayor. With that being said, I'd like to explain to our public how we're going to do public comment if you'd like to speak. So usually in a in-person meeting, we have that little handy dandy. We have a sign-in sheet. Well, we don't have a sign-in sheet, but what we do have, folks, is a chat box. And so for those of you who are here on the call who would like to speak, to access the chat box, you're going to see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, something like seven little circles, one with a microphone, one with a video, one with an arrow pointing up, one with a person. That next one is a little talk bubble. You're going to click on that top bubble, and that's going to open your chat box. And that will be our virtual bulletin board and our sign-in sheet. So if you'd like to speak, I'm going to ask you to please type in your name and your address, and I will call you by the order that you've entered your name and address to speak. You will have three minutes to speak, just like during a meeting. And I will ask that you sign in within the next minute, please. And if you're just here to watch and listen, that's fine too. But I do want to make sure that we're giving our, our public the opportunity to speak if they would like to. And while we wait to see if anyone's going to be signing in, I can go through and remind folks of our logistics. So we've been doing a great job thus far. So we're going to start with orders, motions and resolutions. I am going to call on the Subcommittee Chair to read the motion. The motion, I mean, the page numbers are not there in the agenda, but I have them here next to me, so I can tell everybody what page to turn to for each motion. If you would like to comment, ask a question or debate a motion, same process, please use your chat box to type simply, I would like to speak. Everyone's been doing a great job thus far, and I so appreciate your cooperation. I'm not seeing anyone from the public who is signing in. And I, forgive me if you're having technical issues, and I'm not waiting. But that being said, I am going to move us forward. We do not have a public hearing tonight. We have no second readings. So we're going to move forward to motions, orders and resolutions. Everybody, item one is on page 12 in your packet. And that is taking from the table FY 20-53, the Amendment of 56-18, Annual Stipend for City Council and School Committee. And I know that this was a joint effort between A and O and Ways and Means. So I am going to ask Counselor Gwynne to read this motion on page 12. And then I will ask both Counselor Gwynne and Chair, I mean Vice President Wheeler to share from both sides.
All right, President Stempel, on page 12, it's two parts. You want me to start with the top part? Taking it from the table?
Yes, please.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table Order Number FY 20053 to amend the Code of the City of Greenfield as written in the strike-through attached heretofore, Chapter 56. Articles 7, Stipend for School Board Members and City Councilors, Section 18, Annual Stipend effective January 1, 2025. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the City of Greenfield, which was tabled at the January 15, 2020 City Council.
Thank you. And so too, I feel like this council is just so good at taking things from the table because of the January meeting. So just reminding everybody, this is to take from the table. A yes vote puts it on the table, a no vote keeps it there. So we will do a roll call vote, please. Clerk Scott?
President Stempel, we need a second for the motion, please.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Second, for Counselor Gilmore.
Thank you.
A roll call to take from the table. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynne?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
No.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo? Counselor Mayo, I turned your microphone on.
Standby, I'm having technical issues.
Thank you.
Can we come back to him maybe?
I can.
I would be, I would be a no.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgie? Counselor Forgie, your microphone is now on.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Thank you. The roll call is five yes, sorry, five yes, seven no. The motion does not pass to take from the table.
All right. Thank you. So on the table, it shall stay. Next, we have an order amending ordinance, chapter 56, officers and employees, section 17, mayor. I'm going to kick this one to Vice President Wheeler, please. Page, that's on page 14.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amend the code of the city of Greenfield as written in the strike through attached here to chapter 56, article 6, mayor, section 56-17. Strike $70,000 and in its place, insert $95,000. And further amend the code, amend the index of the code. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format, the code of the city of Greenfield. Chapter 56, article 6, mayor, section 56-17, strike section C in its entirety.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Please, I heard someone first. Please say your name. I heard a.
Counselor Ricketts.
Counselor Ricketts, second. Thank you very much. Motion's been made, second. Report from both, and there is our fur counselor. A report please from both. A report please from both A and O as well as Ways and Means.
I'll defer to Counselor Gwynne to go first, please.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. When we talked about this at A and O and there was a lot of discussion, we voted on it a little bit differently. We voted on the language and the strike throughs and we were going to leave the amount to be determined by Ways and Means. So A and O gave a positive recommendation that the strike through and the language changes were correct. And we'd await further discussion and talk after Ways and Means with Counselor Wheeler were able to put the appropriate revenue that they felt was correct to be in compliance with like communities and existing compensation for the mayor.
Great, thank you. Vice President Wheeler?
Thank you. And Ways and Means took this up. We took the language that was forwarded from A and O and the recommendation to look at the number and gave a unanimous positive recommendation of $85,000. So that is to say, striking the amount 95,000, which was, of course, in the original order, 70,000, and inserting in its place 85,000.
Okay, looking at that now, yep. Okay, are there any questions from counselors? Discussion. Counselor Gwynne? I believe you're muted. Counselor Gwynne, you are still muted.
Oh, that's not helpful.
There you are.
Oh.
Oh, no. Counselor Gwynne, you muted yourself again.
Try one more time. Are we?
There you are. Yes.
All right. Wow. Okay. Counselor Wheeler, on this, there was also a second revenue amount in section B where it said the base shall never exceed $100,000. I just want clarification that that language of $100,000 or what you determined to be correct.
Thank you for mentioning that, Counselor Gwynne. The Subcommittee did talk about that. And we clarified that the ba, that the language, which says the base shall never exceed $100,000, only applies to new mayors. So it does not, by the way we read it, apply to a mayor who's been in office. So at this point, we did not feel the need to revise that number. Certainly at some point in the future, there may be a need, but we chose not to at this time.
So it'll stay $100,000. It used to be 70. You're saying that it was determined that the 100,000 was accurate at this time?
The, the, the base never shall exceed 100, yes.
Correct. All right. Thank you. That, the, the, once again, I just want to make sure A and O had no problem with the language. We just wanted to make sure that $100,000 was determined to you to be accurate. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I don't know if this quantifies as a friendly amendment or not. On line two, under A, changing the mayor may request in their budget versus his/her. I just don't know why it needs to be his or her versus their. And do, I guess, I don't know who would accept that because there's two chairs managing the process.
As far as A and O goes, I don't feel that we'd object to that language as long as it was legal language from that end.
Yeah, and the same goes for, for Ways and Means. I think we would, we would happily accept that as a friendly amendment.
Great. And then I have a, I have a question. I know, and this might be helpful to counselors too, as I attended the A and O meeting when you were spending a lot of time being thoughtful about what language meant what. And so just understanding how this would work with layman's terms versus this very articulate language is before we were working with a reset. So the reset has been striked through. And so the thinking is whoever the current mayor is, whatever salary they have, when they are no longer running or someone else is newly elected, what happens then? So say their, their salary is 95 and then there's a newly elected mayor. What happens to their salary? Just to clarify how this language landed.
The, the clarification, I guess, would be that they would, it was talking about base salaries and so the mayor shall receive an annual salary of $95,000. So, and it wouldn't, it should never exceed $100,000 were the thing. So you had the entrance level with a maximum and that's where we thought the language as presented had enough protection.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions from counselors or comments? And again, just a reminder, if you do have a question, what Counselor Gwynne did was perfect. Just write the word question in the chat box and I'm happy to acknowledge you.
The only difference, I'm sorry, Counselor Stempel.
Continue.
I, of course, was reading off the paper, which was 95,000, although Counsel Wheeler just told us it was 85,000. So I don't want to be on record with the wrong amount.
And so it sounds like we just need to make sure that that language is amended in this copy here. Counselor Gilmore, you're next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Okay, great. The, this is kind of a question and kind of a comment. So this is part of the charter, I believe. And when the charter review group comes together, hope, which, I mean, I kind of was picturing that would happen in the next month or two. And at this point, I'm not sure when it will happen. So when we vote on this tonight, is that something that's automatically going to be forwarded up to that group? And as a member of that group, would it be on, you know, the city, the city councilors who are part of that to bring this forward? Or is it automatic? I'm just kind of curious about where this lands after tonight's vote as far as the charter is concerned.
For that question, I'm going to defer to Clerk Scott. My assumption is let's, let's package everything. I need to go to the Charter Review Commission for this year there, but I'm not sure if that's allowed.
So I believe as part of the charter and ordinance review, both documents would this year need to be brought in line with one another? So when ordinance and charter review is going on, if one affects the other, it would have to be brought in line.
Counsel, Vice President Wheeler has a comment on this.
Thanks. My understanding is this is in the code, not the charter.
And Counselor Gwynne, is that also what you were going to say?
That's exactly the clarification I want to mean. This was code change, not charter change. In fact, we made sure in the language, both Counselor Wheeler and I, that we weren't changing anything that was charter because that's not usually our process. We change code.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Their process will still be heard through your committee, Counselor Gwynne.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to speak over you, Ashley. Thank you for clarifying that because I've, I've been at, I've been at odds with this in my brain this whole time. So thank you.
May I make another suggestion, Ashley?
Yep.
If there is an amendment to be made to the ordinance, if the proposed, the suggestion that you had of changing his slash hers to there, if that could be included in any proposed amendment, that would be wonderful.
Great. And I will make sure that Vice President Wheeler does that when it's time to make that. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anybody here. Vice President Wheeler, were you able to, do you still have your question?
I was just going to make motion to amend at this point. And if people, maybe the, the conversation could move over to that. So I motion. No, I'll defer to Counselor Jarvis.
Yeah, I just, I typed it in and I wanted to get it in before you made your motion. That's all. It didn't get seen. If you could just correct me if I'm wrong, I thought when you guys were doing your, your meeting before this, the, I just wanted some clarification on the 100,000. That wasn't the ceiling. That just meant that the person that was a new mayor couldn't start at that because apparently if we have a mayor in there for 15 years, he's going to make, he or she is going to make more than $100,000, correct? It's not a ceiling. It's just a cap on the started salary.
Correct.
Yes, correct. That is correct.
Very much.
Except that, may, may I? Do I have the floor?
Yes.
Except that there are sort of nuances to this that I'm not entirely sure we, we fully talked out in Ways and Means because we were focused more on the number and the amount of compensation. But I'm now a little concerned that the, the word base remains while being removed. It remains in section B while being removed in section A. So I may, I guess I would ask Counselor Gwynne if, Counselor Gwynne, if you feel that it's, it has the clarity that it needs.
You know, this was, we, Counselor Stempel, can I go forward?
Yes, please.
We talked about this and I would, I might need, you know, one of my counselors from that committee. We talked, excuse me, on the mayor shall receive an annual salary of $95,000. They struck the word base. And on the bottom part, it says the base shall never exceed 100,000. And that was, that was the question that, that we had when we were doing it. Do those need to have some language that of, of similar of talk? And one, so is it, is it an annual salary of 95,000? It's, it's not a base salary. So in the bottom, you know, the annual salary should never exceed 100,000 is different than what Counselor Jarvis just asked because the annual salary never exceeding 100,000 is not what that says. It says the base shall never exceed 100,000. So there, there's where the difference was. One, if you're going to have the base never exceed 100,000 on the starting of the mayor, is it the annual salary? Now, I would say where that came from is each year or each time, the mayor can request an increase to their salary during budget. So they can receive an annual salary of 95,000 and then they can ask to change it. So that's why it wasn't changed in base in the beginning. It was trying to get rid of that reset portion. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So I, I see your, your question, Counselor Gilmore, but I'm going to pose a question. It sounds like this might not quite be ready. I just want to gut check Counselor Gwynne and Vice President Wheeler if they feel like this is ready to vote on or if it might behoove us to send it back to committee for just one more round before we move it to vote at the full council level. And if you both say yes, we can work this out. I just don't want to be wordsmithing and moving things around here on the floor.
I think the only problem I'm having with this is this has been there for our, our new mayor for quite a bit of time. And I think we might be able to handle it this evening and make sure if there's some of that terminology that either is concerning to town clerk or if there's some counselors that, that aren't comfortable with the, the difference in the language, then we could talk it out. But I understand we, some of it is wordsmithing and, and understanding of the intention. Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, I concur that I think we can get through this tonight and that there is a, I think, a little, not pressure, but I think that there's, should be some incentive to get through it tonight because the mayor is being compensated under the, the much lesser amount. And I do think it would be fair to deal with this in time for the FY 21 budget to be approved in a way that this could go into effect. So I think, I think we can talk it out. I'm unsure that section B is necessary from my, from my standpoint. I'm not quite ready to make the motion to remove it, but I think I'd like to talk about it.
Counselor Stempel?
Let me, can I, is it appropriate to let other counselors ask or do you just want to finish one more thing, Counselor Gwynne?
I just want, I just want to draw our attention to another piece of this language. If you notice in A, it says the mayor shall receive an annual salary of 95,000. But if you look further on, it says the mayor may request in any of their budget submission to the town council an increase in the base salary. So there's where base comes back in section A. Okay, it comes back. It says they can increase the base salary, however the increase shall be, the lesser of. And it shows the guidelines that were set up to control that. Then when you refer to it in section B, it says the base shall never exceed 100,000. And that's And that's where that, that comes from, because they can increase the base, and they can ask to increase it, which they have to do on a yearly basis. But that's where base comes back in. It's being struck in the top, in the first line, but it still appears in the top under "submission to the town council, an increase in that base salary." So, it gives control to the councils still to go over the $95,000, or $85,000 in this case.
Okay, I'm going to acknowledge Counselor Gilmore at this time for her question, and then maybe we can continue figuring this out.
Thank you. So, I am a policy person, and I'm a labor person. And I think that I read some of these words in a different light than some other people might read them, because there's a lot of, you know, technical, like shop talk, jargon, sort of stuff that I, that, some meanings that I put into these. So, when I'm thinking of somebody's base salary, I'm thinking, this is how much they get paid. And then, in addition to their base, they can get things like overtime, and holiday pay, and hazard pay, and, you know, clothing allowance, or, you know, there are different things that go, you know, different ways that people are compensated outside of their earnings that I see just from my labor perspective. So, I'm wondering, I don't, I don't think someone, you know, in a position like, like the mayor, you know, is obviously, it's a salary position where they get paid a set amount. They don't get hazard pay, they don't get overtime or holiday pay or things like that. So, why are we using the word "base" at all? Does my question make sense?
I think it does. And so, I'll throw it up in the air, and I'll let either Vice President Wheeler or Counselor Gwynn answer that. I think "base" is what we had to start with, because "base" was originally in the language. Am I right?
Yeah, the original language said an annual base salary of $95,000. And they struck the word "base" from that portion, because they didn't want it to appear. Counselor Wheeler, where, where did you get to with that terminology? Because we debated that. Major, maybe Counselor Rick, or Forgé, when we were discussing this in detail with language, because we spent a long time. I, you know, there's a part of me that agrees exactly with Counselor Gilmore in saying, I'm not sure where "base" came to play. And there was a reason that "base" had to come in later, but I'm not sure it's necessary if it's gonna read annual salary, and then the mayor may request to the town council, "An increase in salary, however the increase shall be the lesser of," with those ramifications. And then, "Any increased vote to the town council in any year shall become the new base for future requests." That's the piece where "base" comes back. Because in that Part B, it says, "In any year shall then become the new base for future requests." The base shall never exceed $100,000.
I'm gonna acknowledge Counselor Forgé. She's been waiting very patiently. She might also have some comments based on the process from A&amp;O.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What I wanted to suggest, because it's, it's, I'm definitely on board with the fact that the mayor needs to get paid a higher salary than she's making right now. It seems to me that the language is something that a labor attorney might want to take a look at, to advise us. They realize this is just the code, but the code is, is based on the Charter. And so, it might be in our best interests to push this back out for a legal review, because we're gonna need that same kind of review when we do, you know, when we're looking at the Charter to make Charter amendments. Does anybody have any comments on that idea?
And if you do, please chat in the chat box. I just have a, I just have a sense that this isn't quite ready. And I understand, I'm, I'm totally for paying the mayor what that role is due, but this just sounds like it's really not ready. I don't want us to sit here for an hour and ruminate. I want to give everyone a chance to speak. And so, Counselor Gilmore, you had a friendly amendment?
Yes, and I recognize that some other people commented in the comment box after me. So, if this clears things up, then that's great. And if not, I'm willing to take it back. But I'm saying, as a friendly amendment, let's say, "The mayor shall receive an annual salary of $85,000. The mayor may request in their budget submission, an increase in their salary, however the increase shall be the lesser of, the average increase, including any COLA or staff and pay, such and da-da-da, 5% of the mayor's salary, da-da-da-da-da." B, "Any increase voted by the city council in any year shall then become the new basis, not base, of any further request." Does that make sense to people?
I'll second that, if that's a motion.
My only question would be, Counselor Gilmore, is "base" comes up again in the next sentence?
What I'm looking at on page 14, under C, "The base salary shall reset," that part?
No, above that. No, above that, you just said, "then becomes the new..."
Shall be the basis for any future requests. "The annual salary shall never exceed $100,000," to finish my thought. Does that, does that make sense to folks?
I think that's a different intention than what the "base" meant in that line. I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
Yeah, that's the stumble point, right there.
Yeah, so let's hear from, I want to make sure that everybody's being heard. So, Counselor Disorder?
So, what, I, I hear what everyone is saying, and appreciate it. I think that it would be, we've been holding on to this for quite a while. And I think that two committees have reviewed it and agreed upon it. Could we perhaps consider voting on it as two different subcommittees agreed on it? And then, at some juncture, run it by our, if you have someone else that you want to run it by, or, or if not, do it retroactively, because I, I think it's unfair the way it is right now, and holding on to it just doesn't feel right to me. That's all.
Counselor Ricketts?
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for all your thoughts into this. I think when it was on the A&amp;O table, why we had it so long was because we spent all of our time just working on the word "reset." So, I think all of this really began with the previous mayor. As he left, he's the one who had put this forward. This is actually Mayor Martin's work. So, I think what he was trying to do was to get whomever was in this position next not be at that $70,000, it works up slowly again. So, we ended up spending so much time on all the wording and stuff on it. And it should have really just been about, more about the dollar amount. So, I think the "base" piece of it is basically about, and why we didn't want that $70,000 any longer either, was because the next mayor, and the next mayor after that could come in being a mayor from some other city. So, we just wanted to make sure it didn't go back to $70,000, but we needed them to know, well, the base that we're gonna pay here is $85,000. So, I think we are just actually turning our wheels more than they need to right now. So, I think we just need to really just take out some of this wording that's tripping people up. I think we need to just make it so it's clear, and just look at it as if we were putting this ad in a paper or something of how someone would be hired, and think about it in that way. The Charter Commission will work on it more, but we were basing it on something other than Charter. So, I think we are just getting too lost in it at this point.
I agree with you, Counselor Ricketts. I looked at a few other communities' language for their mayor. Mayorial compensation, and West Springfield, for example, just says that the mayor is paid this. And then, so he's making this much, and then if someone comes in after him, they're making that much too. And so, I think we're looking at it from like a step increment, and they don't have that provision. There's no step increment. They just pay their mayor a fair amount, and then if they want to change it, they just change the amount. And so, this language, to me, is prohibitive. And, and like, it's like, I, I agree that Mayor Martin had to go through hoops in order to get paid fairly. And so, in his intention to make it more simple for the mayor after him, I believe there's still a lot of hoops language in here that we have to jump through in order to get this done. I, at this time, I realize that, okay, I'm gonna, Counselor Gwynn, and then if I feel like we can't get there, I'm gonna send it back to committee.
All right. Here's what I'm thinking. First, you have to look at, we didn't change B at all. B wasn't changed. It was only C was taken away, and A was modified. If we take and put "base" back in that first line, "The mayor shall receive an annual base salary of $85,000," then "base" makes sense everywhere. We just put "base" back in. "Base" in the beginning doesn't change anything. It just says, "They receive an annual base salary." If they want to increase it, it says in the next line that they submit it to the council, and there's a procedure. And then, in the end, it says, "The base shall never exceed $100,000." We can take that up another time. Just put "base" back in, in that front line of A. If "base" is there, it doesn't change the meaning of this at all.
Point of order, is there a motion and a second on the table?
No.
No, that was with...
The motion was made, and I don't, I don't think so. I'm...
Counselor Gilmore. Counselor Wheeler seconded, I believe. I think Counselor Gilmore, did you make an amendment?
She, she kind, I, for me, both, both the motion and the second were made like, well, is that? I don't know if that is, if it is. And so, I'm not sure that Sheila ever made a firm motion. Clerk Scott, what would you gather that as?
I believe I heard a motion by Gilmore, and I believe I heard Wheeler starting to make a second, but there was conversation happening, so I'm not clear if I heard a second or not.
In my opinion, it sounded as though Sheila did not officially make a motion, and then Vice President Wheeler asked if it was a motion, and said if it was, he'd second it. To me, it seemed a lot more discussion-based.
Point of, point of, point of information, or point of order. Yes, I believe President Stempel is correct about that. But is there not already a motion on the floor?
From you?
Yes, which I originally, and, and that the council needs to act upon.
The original motion is on the floor. It was seconded, and parliamentarian has made a comment agreeing with President Stempel that there is no second motion on the floor.
Perfect.
Thank you, Will.
So, I would like to make an amendment to Counselor Wheeler's motion if we want to go back or let Counselor Wheeler reiterate it, maybe leaving that "base" in there, and then we could probably move this forward.
By all means.
So, do we want Counselor Wheeler just to read the $85,000 as the base salary and move it forward as is?
There's three, so...
There was no motion to amend the amount to $85,000.
The amendment now would be the word "base" back in, the $85,000, and the replacing his/her with there. So, there'd be three elements of this amendment, if so, to, to make it.
Second?
Yeah, I second that.
Could someone please clarify for me who made that motion?
Vice President Wheeler, please make the motion.
Gladly. I've, I've been wanting to. Motion to amend the article as follows. To restore the word "base" in the sentence, "The mayor shall receive an annual base salary of..." To, to strike the word $95,000 and replace with the words $85,000. To strike in the same paragraph, the word "his/her," and replace with "there." And that's, that's it, I believe.
I second that.
Second, Counselor Ricketts?
I heard Counselor Gwynn's second. Some motion's been made, seconded. Question, Penny, I mean Penny, I'm reading the names on the screen. Counselor Ricketts, would you like to speak?
Sure, Ash. No, that's fine. Yes, President Stempel. All I, all I was gonna say, and I'm glad Counselor Wheeler got to it, is he has been trying to do it, because I've been unmuting every time, so I could hurry up and second this, and things just kept happening to him. And yes, I, I just wanted to clarify it, but what he just did was perfect. And yes, that's it. But he was trying.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, I wanted to go back to my question about the base salary. Because, like I said, when you're talking about labor law, a base salary is a very, very specific legal term that we use in union contracts. So, in addition to this base salary, I don't think the mayor is, is, is really eligible for any kind of additional pay. So, I wonder why we're including the word "base salary." And if we're using it as something different than the, the legal definition, I wonder if that might be a problem.
I don't know enough about that. I'm gonna address Counselor Dolan. I need to grab water. May I please have Vice President Wheeler step in for me, please?
This is Counselor Dolan. So, I've been looking up a lot of definitions while we've been having this conversation. My understanding is that "base salary" just means the money that someone is paid, and does not include fringe benefits. So, if we did not have the word "base" in there, an argument could be made at some point that the fringe benefits are part of the salary. And that would be justification for lowering the actual money that we're paying the mayor. So, I would, I would advocate for keeping it in, based on all the definitions that I've read.
Thank you, Counselor Dolan. Are there, is there anyone else that would like to speak on the amendment? If you have anything to say, you might as well, because I don't know that we're, we want to vote before, until President Stempel returns. But I am glad that it seems like we finally talked this out. Counselor Disorder?
Counselor Dolan's definition?
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Gilmore. I see that President Stempel has returned, so I'm gonna return the meeting.
I see that President Stempel has returned, so I'm going to return the meeting to you, President Stempel, and say that Counselor Disorga, I believe, has a question.
By all means.
So we've all talked a lot. I, I'd like to move the question.
A question's been, motion's been made, seconded, non-debatable. Roll call vote, please. Clerk Scott?
Yes, will someone please clarify for me who seconded the motion?
Counselor Gwynn.
Thank you. Okay, roll call to call the question. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Great, so we are going to move back into another roll call vote, to vote.
So this is a roll call on the motion as, on the amendment to the motion. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Sorry, yes.
Counselor Wheeler? Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
The amendment passes unanimously.
Wonderful. I just, tons of great work by everybody on this, so thank you for working together and partnering, you two committees, for getting this done. So thank you very much. Moving us along, item three is amend rules of procedure five-
Yes, actually, that was the motion to amend. It was not the final motion as amended.
Sorry, I'm going to get water for a second. You don't know what's going on. Okay. All right, so is there any discussion, further discussion on the amendment?
Motion.
Second by Gilmore?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, did you need a second?
No, so we, so we, so just to clarify, so I'm on the same page, which I thought I was on. So we just, we voted to approve the amendment. So the amendment, so now we are discussing the full motion as amended, the main motion.
Can someone read it back? We're all definitely on the same page.
Yes. Yes, please, thank you.
I, would you like me to read it?
I would appreciate it. Clerk Scott?
Okay. Ordinance fifty-seven, fifty-six, or seventeen, compensation. A, the mayor shall receive an annual base salary of eighty-five thousand dollars, period. The mayor may request, in their budget submission to the town council, an increase in the base salary. However, the increases shall be of the lesser, be, excuse me, shall be the lesser of, one, the average increase, including any COLA or STEP, in part for the same fiscal year negotiated with all bargaining units within the town of Greenfield or, number two, five percent of the mayor's salary for the prior fiscal year. B, any increase voted by the town council in any year shall then become the new base for any future requests. The base shall never exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. And so now to Mr. Roberts' point, this is now the main motion. This is what we're voting on. Discussing. So is there any discussion on what we have now from counselors? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote, and we're voting on the motion as read by Clerk Scott.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Would the president like to vote?
Sure, and I also vote yes.
Unanimous.
All right, well done, everybody. Moving on, item three now is amend rules of procedure five sixty-five dash five A. To debate limits, I am going to ask Counselor Gwynn to please read this on page fifteen.
All right, here we go. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amends the rules of procedure, chapter five sixty-five, rule five, debate section B, one, limits to read as follows. B, limits, no member shall speak more than twice to the same question without leave from the chair, nor more than once until all other members desiring to speak have spoken. Item one, no member shall have or hold the floor for more than three consecutive minutes of debate unless extended by a majority vote of the council.
Motion's been made.
Second by Gilmore?
Thank you. Report of committee, please, Counselor Gwynn.
This received a unanimous negative recommendation from appointments and ordinances.
Thank you. I see a question or a comment from Counselor Disorga.
Hi. I agree with what appointments and ordinances came up with. I do not see this thus far as a committee where people are speaking for a great length of time or interrupting each other. We give normally, in public comment, which we're not having now, an hour and a half sometimes or two hours to let people speak. And I think one of the most important jobs that we have as counselors is to listen to one another and to make those decisions. If we do have a problem, where someone is taking too much time, or speaking too often, or interrupting another, this might be something to put in place. But right now, I see this as a wonderfully working body, and I think that we really do need people to participate. I'm done.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore?
Thank you. I would actually like to speak in support of this. I think that three minutes is enough time to state your case. You know, whenever we have something that comes up, we all have the opportunity to make a comment and to argue in favor or against. And then there's a period where we can ask clarifying questions. I think that three minutes should suffice. And if it doesn't, it's up to the chair to lengthen that amount of time. And I think that if something is very complex, we can lengthen it. What I worry about, you know, the, the time that I've spent on the council, what, you know, and I don't, I don't want to criticize anybody as an individual, because I think when it's an individual, it's not a problem. It's when it's all of us, it becomes a problem. Is when you have everybody who wants to get up and kind of speak for five minutes about how much they love this department, or how much they're in favor of this motion, and we're all saying the same thing? That's great that we're all in agreement, but it does take up a lot of time. And I think that that's time that would be better spent when we get to the end of our meeting and we're making tough decisions when we're very, very tired. I think it'd be nice if we could kind of trim this down just a tiny bit. I think that three minutes is fine, and I think that if a person, not to be critical, but you know, if, if it takes you five minutes to get to your point, then maybe we need to sort of reflect and think about what we need to cut out of our arguments.
Thank you. Counselor Ricketts?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I don't, I'm not in favor of the three-minute time limit. I'm basically not in favor of it is because we are talking about thousands and millions of dollars. Now, I just see how long this conversation took and how a couple people might have come back two or three times because we're just clarifying it. It's too important. It's a difference between seventy thousand to eighty-five thousand to ninety-five thousand dollars. I spend a lot of time talking to people to get elected, to sit on this council. And so I'm not going to then look at the clock and want to get out a little earlier at night and want to cut it down. We never used to use the time limits at all. We just began as council using the time limits last year, and it was at five minutes, and it, and it worked. And we saw people actually changing their minds after listening to each other because people come from different places. Right now, we have a fairly new council. And of all times, this is the worst time to shorten speech because I feel like there's so much that I can learn from some of our newer counselors and stuff. There are people that email me the next day and say, why did you vote no on something? And I explain it if I didn't take the time like I am right now on this particular being. But I never want to even say or have any counselor talk about, you know, the length of time of our meetings or later on, we get tired and stuff, because it's really what we signed up to do. Five minutes isn't that much time, and we actually don't do this often. And I think self-policing is really good. So if you see all the counselors talking about one thing over and over again, that when it comes to you, you can just skip that part. You do it on your own. But we just can't make those kind of rules for each other right now because these residents showed up to elect each and every one of us. They want to know where you stand. They want to know where we stand so at the next election, they know whether they're actually being heard. So I think leaving it the way it is, and it's five minutes, it's fine. And we know when we should start to wrap it up. But no, I mean, I'm, I'm getting to know a lot of the new people on this council. We have lots of things that are going on. We have very big decisions to make. This budget's coming up. Millions and millions of dollars, and three minutes should not hold us up from making these big decisions because it's impacting those residents out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan?
So I was the one who submitted this. I'll just speak in support of it. This, first of all, I'm very glad that our meetings have been short and orderly for the last few months. This suggestion was responding to a very real need last year. I, the intention is not to limit debate where we need it. The intention is to limit the extent to which someone can filibuster, and also to encourage counselors to be prepared with their comments. Five minutes of speech is seven hundred and fifty words. That is a lot of words to make a point when really we should all be coming to the meetings pretty much prepared to vote anyway, and in most cases, we are. So I would just conclude brevity is the soul of wit. I feel like three minutes is plenty for what we do, and I would encourage folks to vote for it.
Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Forgé.
Thank you. I'm really glad to hear that Counselor Dolan gave us a little bit of background as to why things changed to the point where speech was more limited. You know, I understand the frustration, but more to the point, I, I have to, I have to go a little bit further than that because it seems that it's reactionary, and it shouldn't be reactionary in regard to representing people and the right of counselors to speak. We have Robert's Rules of Order. We also have confidence in our council president who's mission is to make sure that every counselor is allowed the opportunity to represent their constituency on the council. We give her, in this case, our vote of confidence in her election to control us and patrol us, which is fine. But I am not a person that's in favor of limiting the, the, the council, individual counselors', right to speak, especially when there are, you know, we represent large groups of people on many, many issues and huge budget times. And the other piece that plays into this for me is we've discussed the fact that counselors are getting stipends. If we're getting stipends and then we're limiting our speech, it doesn't seem that one is consistent with the other. Actually, we should be able to, you know, be able, again, to address the issues that are on our mind and speak respectfully one another and listen to our council president when she feels it's time to let another individual speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Forgé. And then we have Counselor Gwynn.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to repeat what everyone else is repeating, but I- but I do not think limiting the amount of time is necessary. I think, in fact, there's a couple of things that were said. I too believe if you have a strong presidency, vice presidency, you have chairs that can see where something's going and direct it correctly. We don't need to tell someone they've spoken too long. If there's a feel by the person running a meeting, then they can make that adjustment as that's being said. There was another statement made that most of us come to our meeting ready to vote. Well, if you're coming to the meeting and you're not listening to other counselors debating and making points and making clarifications, then that's not correct either. I was put in my place 20 years ago on this council by people saying, why are you afraid to listen to other people's opinions? Because are you afraid that yours might be wrong? And the answer was never yes, mine was wrong. But it made me think, it made me listen. I came into that meeting with an opinion that I had drawn. But I love to listen to other counselors and draw from their experiences and their pieces. And there were many of meeting. I came in with thought and left with confidence. And I think we have to do that. And then when we look at something like we just did with the mayoral salary, I watched a lot of the council meetings last year, and there were not many days that I felt you as a team, at the end of the day, were unanimous and you could present to our constituents that we came together and we worked out our differences and we came up with a compromise, and here it is. And we just proved it can be done. So to limit what people have to say to get that unanimous feeling that we're all working as a team, I don't think it's the time to change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to say? Seeing none, Counselor Gilmore.
And to the point of facilitation, I do keep, believe it or not, I do keep track of who speaks what. I would remind everybody that each person does have two opportunities to speak to a motion.
Thank you. So I think it is important that we understand how we intend to vote when we come to meetings because these issues are so complex. We can't come in undecided, spend 15 to 20 minutes listening to our fellow counselors and then vote. I think that, you know, I spend a lot of time, you know, reading through things, thinking about it, double-check it and make sure I understand the details. I get, you know, all sorts of feedback from my constituents. And when I show up at the meeting, it has to be a pretty good argument to change my mind because by then I've already done so much research and I've already talked to so many people, especially with some of these hot button issues, that it would really take a solid argument to persuade me. And going back to Counselor Dolan's point, a really solid argument is going to be delivered in less than three minutes, much less, less than five minutes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So it sounds, it sounds to me like this is preference over, preference over all else. And what I, what I will say is that my preference has always been to, yes, have some sense of where I stand on something, but I do lean on my colleagues and their, their personal experiences and their conversations with constituents and their point of views, the shoes that they walk in that are different than my own to help me think through my decision. And I don't think we've had any abuses of the five minutes. And if I do feel as though people are rambling on, I have no problem asking them to wrap it up. I'm not in favor of this motion because of that. I do, I do want this council to, to lean on each other for experience and for information and for ideas. And so I think we've, we've been there. And yeah, I am ready to take this to a roll call vote. Clerk Scott.
Counselor Jarvis.
No.
Counselor Gwynn.
No.
Counselor Disorder.
No.
Counselor Bottomley.
No.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
No.
Counselor Elmer.
No.
Counselor Forgie.
No.
Counselor Rickett.
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
What is the count?
There is currently four yes, eight no.
I don't need to vote.
So four yes, eight no, the motion fails.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item. Item four, disclosure by special municipal employee of, okay, so they're separated, yep, all right. So these didn't go to committee, so I am going to ask Counselor Gilmore to read this one. And this one is on page 16.
The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council hereby approves the disclosure of financial interest under MGLC 268A subsection 20D by special municipal employee Kelly Dixon, who seeks to provide personal services to the Greenfield Health Department as a part-time public health nurse identified in the attachment exhibit A, and further authorize the city council president to sign on behalf of the city council.
Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't sure if I was muted or not. Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gwynn. Thank you. Any discussion? This did not go to committee, and so we felt it was pretty self-explanatory. Counselor Gwynn. Oh, I see.
Yeah. We didn't take this up at appointment ordinances because we wanted it to move forward. It was pretty straightforward, and President Stempel felt that it would be best to get it in front of us as a full council immediately.
Thank you. And sorry, Counselor Gilmore, I saw you guys popped up at the same time.
No, it's fine. My question is, I, I just don't understand what our role is here. Do we, it seems like she's already working for the city and it's an emergency. I, I'm not sure if I understand our role in this.
Our role is to raise, essentially, we're raising a flag that this could be seen and maybe, what's the right language? It's a disclosure. So this way, she's not breaking any, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. The language is escaping me. But so basically, we're saying like, yes, thank you for, yes, disclosure for conflict of interest, thank you. So basically, we're saying, yes, thank you for letting us know we're either approving it or denying it. So our role is, is saying, yes, thank you for bringing this to our attention. We authorize this. Or this is our opportunity to say, thank you for bringing this to our attention. We do not authorize this. That is our role.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, a roll, a roll vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley. Counselor Bottomley, I have turned on your microphone.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler. Counselor Mayo. Counselor Mayo, I have turned on your microphone.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgie.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts. Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. Our next is on page 25. It's another disclosure of financial interest. Counselor Dolan, please.
One second.
Sorry, I didn't mean to like popcorn it out.
Moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council hereby approves the disclosure of financial interest under MGLC 268A section 20D by special municipal employee Jennifer Hoffman, MPH, who seeks to provide personal services to the city of Greenfield as a part-time medical facility liaison for the emergency operations center identified in the attached exhibit A and further authorize the city council president to sign on behalf of the city council.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Gwynn. Discussion similar to the previous one. Seeing none, a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley. Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
No.
No, thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgie.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts. Majority vote passed.
Great, thank you. Next, we have item six, amend ordinance, chapter 213, animals, section 213-3, license fees D. That is on page 33, and I will ask Vice President Wheeler to read.
Thank you, Madam President. I moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield by amending chapter 213, animals, section 213-13, license fees, provision D, by deleting the current section in its entirety and replacing it with the following. Chapter 213, animals, D. Should any owner or keeper fail to license a dog by June 1, the owner or keeper shall pay a late charge of $25 before obtaining said license, excepting, one, a dog brought into the town as provided in Mass. General Law, chapter 140, section 138; two, when a state of emergency has been declared by the state of Massachusetts. This late fee shall be applicable after the 45th day after the arrival of such dog. And further amends the index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Counselor Forgie.
Thank you. So this also didn't go to committee. This was brought up right before chairs. We've provided some relief in terms of payments of taxes to residents. And due to the language in our dog license language, we were unable to do that. So we felt that this language would allow us, without actually changing Mass. General Law language, to enable our residents some time and leniency while registering their dogs. Does anyone have any question? I see Counselor Ricketts.
Um, I, maybe I'll let the clerk go first because maybe she's going to answer my question.
Clerk Scott.
Thank you. So there's a little bit of a formatting issue. So number one, a dog brought into the town as provided in MGLC 140, 138. The next line should be, this late fee shall be applicable after 45th day after the arrival of such dog. And then number two should come after that.
Oh.
Okay. So the comment of the late fee shall be applicable should come after number one, and then number two can follow that. My apologies for that error.
So do we need to amend the language as it's presented in the packet? Will, Mr. Roberts? I'm assuming yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Say that again.
So we have a bit of a typo, Mr. Roberts, where line, so it goes line, in this motion, it goes line one, a dog brought into the town. And then it's supposed to say this, then it should say this late fee shall, but we have line item two in between. Do we have to amend the, where it's typed in order to pass it appropriately?
I think it would be a good idea, yeah.
Sure. All right, so I'll make that motion. I move to amend.
Um.
Yes.
You can ask for a motion.
Okay. May I ask for a motion?
I'll make that.
May I ask? Counselor Elmer made that motion.
I move that we move the, the line two below the line that appears after it. So it reads.
Second.
From Counselor Ricketts.
I think the dog already seconded it.
That's really, he's just really, really wants to get one.
That wasn't my question.
I object, the dog is not an elected member of the city council.
Um, I, I still have my.
And I just, Mr. Roberts, was that sufficient?
Yeah, yes, yes. You don't mean the dog, you mean the change.
Yes, Counselor, you may take the floor.
Okay, for me, or?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so, um, oh, what my question actually was going to be was, well, because of this pandemic and everything, is there any leeway on these licenses right now?
That is a question for Clerk Scott.
So without this amendment, the ordinance does require a late fee to be charged. It's, it says, the owner or keeper, if they shall fail to license their dog, the owner or keeper shall pay a late fee. So without the amendment, they shall pay a late fee. But if the amendment were passed, because we are currently in a state of emergency, the late fee would not apply.
Perfect.
Until the state of emergency was cleared.
Any other questions?
There is an amendment on the floor that has not yet been voted on, just to acknowledge.
Yep. All right, so let's take care of that first. Let's vote on that amendment to move the sentences around, and we'll take a roll.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder. Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgie.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts.
Yes.
The amendment passes.
Excellent. Any further discussion on the motion? We will take another roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgie.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts.
Upstayed.
Motion passes.
Kathy, you missed me. Kathy.
I'm sorry.
Call on Counselor Gilmore. It's okay.
I'm sorry, Sheila. Counselor.
No worries. For the record, yes.
Thank you. Motion still passes.
Wonderful, thank you. And our last motion of the night is the approval of a multi-hazardous mitigation plan resolution, and I will have Counselor Gwynn read that on page 34, please.
Oh, sorry about that. Page 34?
Correct, yep.
Upon recommendation of the mayor, ordered that FEMA approve multi-hazard mitigation plan along with the supporting resolution be adopted by the City Council as presented in the supporting documentation attached to this order.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second, Disorder.
Thank you so much. You guys are getting so good at this. Motion's been made and seconded. This also did not go to committee. This was a little bit of an add-on later. We wanted to avoid putting this on in May because we'll have a lot of budget stuff going. But this is to support a grant application from Director Turog for this plan. We do have some questions. Counselor Disorder.
Am I on? Yes. I don't have a question. I was on the, just wanted to say, I was on the hazard mitigation team with Chief Strahan, members of the Fur Cog. We met for months on this hazard mitigation plan, and there was going to be a final presentation where everyone would have gotten to see this, and due to COVID-19, that didn't happen. But I would just like to assure you that an enormous amount of thought went into it, and I am hoping that it will pass. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Vice President Wheeler.
In all the multiple hazards, this doesn't mention coronavirus at all. But I think I'm going to vote for it again. I'm going to vote for it anyway. Normally, a month to read a 300-page document would not be enough, but these are strange times, so I support it. There's a lot of good stuff in here. I haven't been, I haven't gotten all the way through it, but I'm gonna. Lord knows I have the time.
And there, I think there is a clause in there that's like, "And all other hazards", because that was the first thing I looked for, too. Thank you. Counselor Bottomley.
Yes, I don't believe Director Warner is still on, but I did have a question, and maybe Ginny, you can answer this. But I did want to thank the people who wrote this because it's incredibly in-depth report, and it has a tremendous amount of data. Some of it's a little disturbing, but I did have a question because it may come up with the fire station under the flooding section in the action plan at the end, "Medical Infrastructure", and I also wanted to state, a lot of this falls on the DPW for planning and implementing infrastructure changes for natural disasters. But one in particular was the Maple Brook Culvert, which affects flooding at where they want to put the fire station at 34 Riddell. And I also saw in there that the Maple Brook Culvert was recommended in the 2005 mitigation plan for replacement and rehabilitation. So I'm guessing that that's a huge or expensive project, since nothing was done in 15 years on it. It was listed, I think, as critical infrastructure back then. So I'm just curious about the status of that.
May I speak? May I speak, President Stempel?
Yes, I was just going to say that Maple Brook Culvert, welcome to the council, Counselor Bottomley, because you'll hear a lot about Maple Brook Culvert, and I guess the council's chipping away at it incrementally. Counselor Disorder, please, please share some more information.
I cannot speak to this as eloquently as the people that were involved in this, and I wish some of them were still online. However, the Maple Brook Culvert is large, and there's a lot of work that needed to be done to it. And I do not know that the final location for the fire station is going to be located on Riddell. I did hear that that was the last thought. However, the fixing of them, if indeed that's where it's going to be, the fixing of the Maple Brook Culvert in that area was not going to be an enormous expense. It was a small part that needed to be redone. But I am not an architect or building designer, and I sat there at the meetings, and I will tell you that there were great heads there together who were looking at that, and that's all. But I know that that one piece of it was not going to be, that one piece of it was definitely going to be addressed if that's where it was going to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually texting the director to see if he'd hop back on, but I don't think he'll be able to hop back on before the vote happens. And if I, I'll speak maybe through the mayor's office or however you see fit. If those are questions that you have, our directors, our department heads are certainly the most knowledgeable on each of those, so definitely feel free to get that information if you need it, or emailing the mayor's office or Director Warner's office. Counselor Gilmore.
Very quickly, I recognize that, you know, time is of the essence, and I do plan on voting in favor because of the, you know, the nature of this, but I just want to go on the record and say, I'm really not comfortable on voting on something that I haven't had a chance to really read and digest. And I know this is an emergency. I know that. But in the future, if it's not an emergency, I really would like some more time with the material. That's all.
I wouldn't say it's an emergency, so to speak. This hazard mitigation plan is important. However, it's not racing to the line as related to COVID-19, so I just want to make that clear. We just want to move this through because the application deadline is coming. Counselor Disorder.
So this actually wasn't relative to, to what was happening right now. It was a, it was like a year-long plan where we were looking at all the possible hazards, the largest one of which is flooding. And we had wonderful people from the, I think Otis would remember better, the waterways, rivers, they were watching over the rivers, and the flood zone needed to be expanded. We had things that we just weren't thinking about as far as flooding. So it was a mitigation plan for hazards that might happen as far as snow and flooding, and the biggest problem that we thought we would ever have here would be flooding. And so it was addressing a lot of problems, and there was planned to be a whole one-day program where all counselors and all citizens could have come to really get informed about this, but it had to be canceled due to COVID-19. And now we don't want to lose the funding that we would have gotten. So I would encourage people to vote in favor of it. There were people so much more intelligent and eloquent than myself that worked on this, and I can assure you, it was well done. That's all.
Thank you so much for your insight, Ginny. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgie.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we'll move on to presentation of petitions and similar papers. I believe we have none. Report of committees. Are there any committee chairs who would like to share what's going on with their committee at this time? Of course, what's going on with committees and councils is the same. We're managing through in our new virtual environment, and I do want to commend you all for, we've got this down. We're doing a great job. And I'm going to welcome Vice President Wheeler to speak on our very busy budget season.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just jump on to say what I've been saying, which is that Ways and Means is into budget season at this point. We spoke about the executive and economic development budgets last week. We'll be speaking about public safety tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. The week after that, Greenfield Public Schools, and the week after that, DPW. Then into deliberation. I hope that all counselors are tuning into the meetings, either live or the recordings. And we've got a lot to get through, but we got a good committee this year, and we're going to get through it. Thanks.
Thank you. And Counselor Gilmore, announcement about CRE.
Yes, I just wanted to let people know that, you know, the last time we met, we were meeting on the 4th Wednesday of the month, and we've changed that. We're going to be meeting on the 3rd Monday of the month, starting at 6:00 PM. And since it's not like, so next week, we're going to be meeting electronically. On with May, but when we are meeting in person, we plan on meeting in City Hall. So if anybody has any questions about that, feel free to send me an email. Don't send it to the entire committee because that would be a public meeting. Because of open meeting law, please do not copy the entire subcommittee, but you can send an email to me, and you can copy Kathy and Tammy on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I don't believe we have any unfinished business. We don't have any old business. We do have a lot of new business, and so I want to welcome back Vice President Wheeler to read our first readings.
Thank you, President Stempel. Okay, everybody, buckle in. This is my favorite part of the year every year. Yours, too, I'm sure. City Council First Reading, April 15, 2020. Authorized payment of $67.33 for FY15 EverSource invoice outstanding balance. FY2021 Mayor Capital Budget. Appropriate $230,000 to pay Fire Department lease for Engine Number 2. Appropriate $75,000 to purchase Fire Department brush truck. Appropriate $350,000 to purchase Fire Department engine. Appropriate $10 million for the construction of a new fire station. Appropriate $76,000 to purchase security upgrades for 14 Court Square, 20 Sanderson Street, Energy Park, and waste and water pumping stations. Appropriate $150,000 to purchase a police mobile command post. Appropriate $20,000 to purchase a police mobile message board. Appropriate $115,000 for the design and reconstruction of Sanderson Street. Appropriate $48,000 for traffic safety improvements. Appropriate $40,000 for the sidewalk replacement program. Appropriate $15,000 to replace guardrail. Appropriate $211,000 to purchase road treatment truck. Appropriate $75,000 to purchase mini excavator. Appropriate $44,000 to replace Fisk Avenue parking lot retaining wall. Appropriate $82,000 to replace Four Corners Playground equipment with ACIS components. Appropriate $203,000 to pave Newton and Federal Street schools and construct walkway at North Parish School. Appropriate $20,500 for painting at the North Parish School. Appropriate $157,500 to replace flooring at the Middle School and Federal Street School. Appropriate $45,000 to replace and repair school fencing. Appropriate $100,000 to replace windows at North Parish School. Appropriate $38,500 to replace Newton and North Parish School's exterior doors. Appropriate $185,000 for equipment and related costs of G-Set expansion and customer installation. Appropriate $1 million for repairs and replacement of superinflow and infiltration. Appropriate $940,000 for dredging Leiden Glade. Appropriate $50,000 to be transferred from 1627 bond premiums to replace Green River Pump Station roof. Appropriate $45,000 for the Millbrook well reconditioning. Appropriate $710,000 to authorize lease purchase for a combination fire engine rescue truck. FY2021 Operating Budget. Establish spending limits on revolving funds not to exceed $489,000. Appropriate $1,430,399 for the FY2021 Water Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,280,353 for the FY2021 Sewer Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $1,529,684 for the FY2021 G-Set Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $53,879,617 for the FY2021 General Fund Budget. Appropriate $450,000 from water retained earnings to FY20 Water Enterprise Operating Budget. Appropriate $222,000 from sewer retained earnings to FY20 Sewer Enterprise Operating Budget. That's me.
Second? Sorry, I was muted. That, I don't believe it needs to be seconded. It was just a first reading. But thank you. And thank you for all of that reading. Do we have any motions for adjournment? Seeing none. I do, before we do break, I just, I have been getting a ton of these scam text messages and emails lately. And so I just want to quickly say and remind residents and counselors and anyone who might be listening to be diligent about protecting yourself from scams at this time. And just some guidance, if you don't know the cell number, or the number, or the email, or the person on Facebook, don't trust the text, don't trust the email, don't trust the links especially. And even if you do know the number or the email, still don't trust it. And definitely try to avoid clicking on random links. I've been, I've been receiving text messages about like, making the most out of the state funding, or claiming your share of state assistance. And obviously, those are very enticing things. So the guidance here is, when in doubt, don't act. We're in a very, we're in a society where it's like, we must act now. I must click on this link now. Just wait and confirm. You can call the friend or the family member who sent that to you and say, hey, did you mean to send this to me? So just everybody who's listening, please don't click on strange links, and don't share your personal information. Don't let these jerks take advantage of you during this vulnerable time. So I just wanted to say that. And without further ado, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.
Who moved?
Second by Gilmore.
So motion made by Counselor Ricketts, second by Gilmore. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? None? Absentions? None? All right. Meeting is adjourned at 10:17 PM. Thank you, everybody, so much.